Good evening, everyone. I ask you all to stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we all may do, let us remain standing as, as we just passed Memorial Day in honor of all our fallen veterans, let us keep in mind, all of our veterans, those that are actively defending this break coming. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to post-pandemic first meeting. Looking good, you had a good ground. Roll call of participants, trustee Dean Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Solomon.
Present.
Trustee Albert.
Present.
I'm getting my hand signal, I don't know what they mean. Into the mics! Okay, thank you. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 12th. That is a change from, I believe, Monday, July 5th. Due to the holiday weekend, we moved the meeting up to the 12th of July. Workshop meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 28th.
You might not have the issue for that, but it will be a last-minute issue. I'll let everyone else sign up.
For the workshop or the regular?
The workshop, workshop.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. Chief Lachlan. Fire Department.
Good evening, the work on here. It's been a while since I've done this. First item on the agenda is a new member for the Villager under 18, Nick Madder.
All right. Summer. Okay, so it was under 18, so new member, Nick Madder. Do I have a motion to accept Nick Madder to the Hook and Light Company and add him to the insurance?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan.
Second, trustee Barone.
And trustee Barone, any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Secondly, I finally have some good news about the new fire truck. There's been a serious delay, as you all know. The truck should have been here right about now, maybe a month or so. But because of pandemic supplies, they postponed. So, the truck is finally being built. They're in the process of final metal now, so they're giving us an ECA approximately this counter.
That's good news.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And the third item is, the host company will be hosting the Vol. County Vol. Fire Association June meeting. This is actually their first live reunion person since the pandemic. Something we normally do every year in June.
Okay, that sounds good. Do you need a void motion on that?
That's all I can do, that's much more.
So, I mean, just that we're all in agreement with it, that the Suffolk Vol. company will be hosting the RVAC June meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan.
Second, trustee Barone.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be great. Bring me to the village.
And then, I do have one last thing. I actually received a notice today, and it's going to take place prior to the July meeting. The Allenelle Fire Department has a fireworks display right here. They're requesting that we stand by for them on the 4th of July, from approximately 7:00 to 10:00, I think. Now, I know we gone back and forth and asked about who's later room with them, which never really got off the ground. Is that something that we need to have based fire department?
Well, we have a meeting ahead of time on 28th, so maybe I can discuss, because being out of state, I need a little preparation.
What, will I need to know before June 28th?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll chat certainly before that, whether there needs to be a vote to make it on the 28th or the 4th.
Okay, all right. And that's all, thank you.
All right, great, thank you, everyone. Police Department, Chief Lachlan.
Evening, everyone. For the update for police department, we respond to 9511 service. We have a three-second shot in progress to 12 days on the country's receiving areas. On the hot air, one to the area outside, and one to the forest. One to the air, walking counter school. In all three details, it's on the 9000 scene property areas, the average sheets, a week of reporting 20 miles an hour hillside, 1728 on fire circle, 19 miles per hour in the air counter school. I will continue monitoring the areas and force a vehicle shot by mission. First agenda item I have for tonight is to ask the board to accept the resignation due retirement of police officer Louis Ventorini, effective June 1st, 2021. Also, entering this story is long postman career at Rockland County Sheriff's Office and his higher department in March of 1994. 1994, police officer Ventorini became sufferance, first came out of service, partner came out now. In addition, receiving numerous awards, he'll enter New Haven, participated in the search and rescue operations at Ground Zero of the Vol. Trade Center attack in 2001. After K-99's retirement in 2003, he'll enter New York, K-99 Hero, 2011, and K-99 Patriot from 2001 to 2021. Also entering, he received numerous commendations with both borders for apprehending criminal suspects, locating misadversities, and making numerous large narcotics dealers. Also entering, his presence in all of the U.S. Coast Guard workers, as well as bill presidents and business owners, as he was one of our most well-known and well-liked police officers. We, the police department, wish him well, and his retirement, and all education endeavors.
I have the motion to accept the letter of retirement from Louis Ventorini. Chief Lachlan, Lieutenant Lieutenant Jean Tino, please accept this letter of retirement. I will be retiring from the position of police officer, K-99 officer from the Village of Suffolk Police Department. My retirement date will be May 31, 2021. I would like to thank the village board and the Suffolk Police Department for my career of 37 years for giving me the opportunity to protect and serve the residents of the Village of Suffolk. Sincerely, Louis Ventorini. I have the resolution accepting the letter of retirement from Louis Ventorini. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, on the discussion.
I would really like to thank you, everything you've done since day I came into this village. You saw him every single cell, every day, and it was really nice to see him. Oh, we stopped the car for the process, you were your dog. So, thank you very much, a warm wishing character.
37 to 38 years of policing for Officer Louis Ventorini, 3 K-9 dogs on patrol is rather record-setting, I would say. Perfect gentleman, couldn't act better than the ability of suffering. Thank you, Lou. You were an outstanding officer, I wish you the best.
Thank you, Lou.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
My next item is to ask the board to accept the resignation due retirement of Detective Ann Crowley, also effective 31st, 2021. Detective Crowley started her career at Rockland County Sheriff's Office, non-union, and came to Suffolk Police Department in 1996. She served as patrol officer, as well as bike patrol officer, and jail officer, primarily as a life detective in 2006. She also served as the former juvenile officer, and was instrumental in numerous sensitive investigations in all of special events. Our honorable missing experience and knowledge of Detective Crowley, also specialized in difficult area of law enforcement. We congratulate her, and wish her a wonderful day.
I have the letter here. Please accept this letter of retirement. I will be retiring from the position of police officer detective from the Village of Suffolk Police Department, May 31, 2021. It's been a pleasure to work alongside you and for you, and I would like to thank you for the knowledge and the experience I have learned from you. I would like to thank the village board and the Suffolk Police Department for the opportunity to protect and serve the residents of the Village of Suffolk. I have the resolution accepting the letter of retirement from Ann Crowley. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, on the discussion.
I would like to say, um, thank you to Ann Corrigan, because she, again, every day saw me, and would smile, and hold us felt see, and very comfortable wherever she was. And thank you very much for your service. Thank you.
I would like to say, saying once again, after 26 years in the Suffolk Police Department, from patrol to bike patrol, to the dare officer to detective, now standing in the rear. Thank you, detective, and I wish you the best. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask the board to appoint Mr. Chase Class as police officer full-time. During the last special board meeting, the board nominated him to the position. He's since been cleared for appointment and approved by the Rockland County Department of Personnel.
This time I have the resolution appointing. Am I coming over? Appointing Chase Class to the position of police officer full-time. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, on the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Any oppose? Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I apologize to the board for the late notice on my next item. It's not on the agenda, but I wanted to let the board know that today I received a resignation letter from part-time dispatcher Sean Roberts. He was promoted to a managerial position by his full-time employer and can no longer hold his position with the village. So, I would like to ask the board to consider accepting his resignation effective June 3rd.
So, I have the letter in front of me. Dear Chief Lachlan, this letter is to inform you and the department that effective immediately I will be regretfully resigning from the position as police dispatcher. I have taken a managerial position that requires a considerable amount of time. I will not be able to fulfill the required hours. I want to thank you and the department for everything you have done for me. Respectfully, Sean Roberts. I have the resolution here, accepting the resignation letter from part-time police dispatcher Sean Roberts. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, on the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Any oppose? No.
The last item that I just wanted to discuss with the board was a request by the graduating senior class of the Suffolk High School to hold a short drive-by parade in the village. I emailed the board the details of the parade last week, but just wanted to go over them again with you briefly. The parade, they're requesting that the parade start at the Old Novartis site on Old Mill Road and proceed down Hemian Road to Lafayette. We'll proceed westbound to Chestnut Street and end in the F lot near the baseball fields. We have met with the organizers of the parade, along with the recreation department, and have determined that we can accommodate the request with minimal impact on the village. The organizers are requesting to hold the parade at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, June 22nd, with a rain date of Wednesday, June 23rd.
So, in the discussion, does anyone have any concerns in regards to the high school graduation parade going through the Village of Suffolk and utilizing the police department to provide the needed?
Traffic.
Traffic control. There you go.
Sounds like a great idea.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have any further on the discussion?
Congratulations to the graduates.
Yeah.
There you go. All right, we look forward to the parade. All in favor, I'm sorry?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, perfect.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Ms. Kathy Mills.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, village board. It's nice to be back to see everybody. The first item on the agenda tonight, there was a recent Girl Scout event up at Leo Leiden. The Girl Scout troop collected clothing for people that needed. They were going to do a type of swap. If you gave clothing, the next day you'd be able to get clothing. They had such a tremendous turnout, so they ended up opening it up to anybody that needed clothing. I was up there on Sunday when they were giving out clothing, and people were stopping by. It really was a great event, so they thanked the board for giving them approval to use Leo Leiden. They were outside for the event, and they were thrilled with it. So, if anyone is in need of clothing, they receive so many donations that they can reach out to Recreation and we can connect them with the Girl Scouts. But it really was a nice event, so they say thank you to you for allowing them to use Leo Leiden. The next thing is our Facebook updates. We have been updating Facebook for recent events, recent activities. The constant contact email blast for the public that would like to become a member of our email blast, they can email Nancy in Suffolk Recreation at nchristopher@sofftornny.gov. And we've been getting a lot, a lot of requests lately because of the pool registration, so it's building, so we have a lot of people getting our email blast, which is nice. Our classes, we have chair exercise classes on Mondays and Wednesdays at 10:00 AM at the community center. We have chair yoga classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 10:00 AM, and then Zoom on Fridays at 10:00 AM. Seems like Zoom was so long ago, but we're still going to go with it for a little bit. And then we have Stay Fit, we open back up on Mondays between 11:00 and 2:00 at the community center. We started this week, today actually, this evening, Yoga in the Park, which will be on Mondays in June. So, the next one is the next Monday, the 14th, and then the 21st and the 28th, and that's at 6:30 in the gazebo outside. This Saturday, June 12th, we have the Art and Dine Event between 3:00 and 7:00 PM. This is a collaboration that we have with the Chamber of Commerce, and we have artists coming to the two parks in the village, at the gazebo park and then down at Suffolk Park, so people will be able to go all up and down Lafayette Avenue and be able to go to the restaurants, visit our shops. We've been promoting it between the Chamber and us on our Facebook pages, getting the word out, so we're really looking forward to that. So, if you're around, come down Saturday evening, have a bite to eat. The restaurants are coming up with some really clever ideas for specials, so we're really looking forward to that. So, that is Saturday, June 7th, between 3:00 and 7:00 PM. We have the fishing derby coming up, and that will be on June 19th. Registration is required. On the day of, people will come at 9:30 to register. Fishing is on at 10:00. We did change it up a little this year. We had had, in the past, a barbecue with the Mawa Elks, but we are not doing the barbecue this year, so we are still going to give prizes and things. I do have a question. When, one of the last meetings, we required RSVPs for this, but my question is, are we opening up, can we open it up to all school-age children for the derby? Meaning that, right now, if we just have Village of Suffolk kids, it will be a very small-attended derby. We can do an RSVP and still space people out, but I didn't reach out to the different schools, because we were just doing village residents. So, my question is, should we open it up to anybody Suffolk Central School students in the area, and not just Village of Suffolk?
Wasn't it a Village of Suffolk event, wasn't it always a Village of Suffolk event?
It was always a Village of Suffolk event, but we did give it, we let kids from all the schools attend. That's what we've done in the past, so we can keep it to Village of Suffolk residents, that's not a problem, I just want to just clarify before the next couple of weeks come by.
I would say this year?
Keep it.
Keep it to the Village of Suffolk. I don't know how does the board feel?
How, what does the registration look like?
It's, we have a decent number, but it's smaller than it usually is. And again, it's two weeks out, so we still have some time.
Right.
So, there's still, you know, we still could start to get a lot more people, so I just want to throw it out there tonight before weeks go by and I don't reach out to more kids.
I agree with the mayor on this matter.
I think this year, we should just keep it to?
Yeah.
What do you guys think? Yeah, let's just keep it to the Village of Suffolk.
Got it.
You know, things are changing on a daily basis with the different executive orders and everything else, so let's just keep it.
Okay, that sounds good. The pool is opening on Saturday, June 26th. We are looking forward to that. You can go online now, print out a form, and do a registration. So, we've been getting a lot of mail in, people are bringing in their checks. The mailbox outside that DBW installed is getting a lot of business now and it will be in the next couple of weeks, so registration has begun. Summer concerts, we have Thursdays in July, we've got our schedule booked up. July 1st will be Reflections, the big band, the big, you know, the beautiful group that comes out, and they have a lot of members that go out on the lawn, it's a beautiful event. All concerts will be on Thursdays at 7:00 PM. And again, July 1st is Reflections, July 8th is Hillbilly Parade, July 22nd, I'm sorry, is Crush, July 29th is the 710 Experiment, and then we are having a special performance this year on August 4th, which is a Wednesday, the 42nd Infantry Band that played at Memorial Day, they'll be playing at the gazebo, so that's going to be a real treat for us this year, so come on out to that if you are available. But Thursdays in July, and then a Wednesday in August, we have a nice, a nice group of people coming out for concerts. And then the discussion I have for tonight is Clifford Theater. So, Clifford Theater, you know, as we know, last year we didn't have it. It would have been the 30th anniversary of Clifford Theater. This year would be, if we can do this, the 30th anniversary. Our director, Anthony, is fabulous with coming up with different ways to do programs. He has suggested he would like to do, we would like to do, four different plays this year, and they are not the, you know, the big plays that we would normally purchase. He has a group of people that are writing plays. He has, I don't want to, just, as in the past, I don't want to give the names of the musicals out there, because then kids know it before we get it out there. So, it's four weeks, four musicals. It would be starting on July 6th, they would start to practice, they would have a play every week, and then rehearsals would be from Monday to Thursday here, between 5:00 and 10:00. Masks would be required for everybody that comes into the building. Social distancing and rehearsals. So, we are looking to do that, but Clifford Theater is an exciting program, we're willing, we're ready for that this season. So, that's our, that's.
What would be the age category for the kids?
The kids have always been going into 6th grade in the coming year, up until senior year of the coming year, so 6th to 12th grade.
Yeah, we would just have to, I don't see a problem with it, I'm just thinking about the mask requirement, if they're vaccinated or unvaccinated, I don't know if you're, you know, you were speaking with the director, Anthony?
Anthony, sorry, yeah.
Was Anthony making that recommendation in regards to the mask?
This, you know, as we were starting to plan all this, that was the, yes, that was how we thought to come up with, to have masks here. You know, CDC is changing, and schools right now are not requiring ma, or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, are requiring masks in school, so we're following that until that would change. So, right now, masks until things would change, and then no masks.
Right.
But it's exciting, you know, it's, the way that he's proposing this is how Clifford Theater used to be. It's a workshop. Kids would learn how a play is put on, kids would learn how to do sets, kids would learn how to do makeup, kids would learn how to do, you know, different costume ideas. It's a great concept for Clifford Theater, it's going back to the way we used to have Clifford, so.
When is it, Kathy? What's the date again, August or July?
It's the month of July.
July 6th.
So, it would start July 6th, would be the first practices.
Right.
Then it would go to the end of July for the performances.
Okay, so, you know, if the board so inclines to move forward with Clifford Theater for the proposed four plays, and we'll review the guidelines and the wearing of the mask before they start.
Right, right.
How's the board feel about that?
I really like the idea, I think it's wonderful.
It's necessary.
The mask is necessary, or is, what, I'm sorry?
Well, I felt it was necessary, the mask.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm saying. Does the board, does the rest of the board, or is it just up for discussion? We'll revisit it?
Let's go for discussion when it's more.
At the workshop. We'll just revisit it, we'll see what the guidelines propose by, you know, the time we get closer to the play, so.
Right, I think one of the reasons for the confusion this weekend, what, as we all know what happened Friday, and then Saturday, and Sunday, and today, one of the reasons for the confusion, I think, with schools, and I'll defer to Charles, who's a teacher, was that certain students could be vaccinated, some students couldn't be vaccinated, so it just happened too quickly. So, I do think it's a good idea to leave it open, and we have the workshop on the 28th, and the board can discuss it then, and as we know, things have been changing daily, sometimes hourly, so we'll see what the 28th brings.
So, for clarification, can we go ahead, and we're just, we're just having more discussion?
No, I think we should just, I think we should just move forward now, so do I have a motion to move forward with Kathy's, the four plays throughout the month of July?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone.
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any oppose? So, we'll move forward with that.
Excellent.
And then we'll just, you know, revisit the mask, or?
Okay.
All right?
Excellent.
Do whatever the rules are at the time.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Good. That's great that the Girl Scouts really stepped up in helping the community.
Yeah.
Helping the needy. It's really impressive, so thank you to the Girl Scouts.
Yes.
All right, we look forward to the upcoming full schedule of recreation activities.
Yes, yes.
You've got a lot going on. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Kathy, I have a quick question.
Kathy, wait.
So, I just wanted to follow up. I know last summer, obviously, we didn't end up opening the pool, but there was discussion over items like painting that needed to happen and so forth. Is the pool 100% ready to open this summer on?
The pool, believe it or not, was painted today.
Oh.
It was painted today, and I know this is going to sound strange, but Stan from the water department called. I don't know if you all saw the rain that happened this afternoon?
Mm-hmm.
It happened, but he said it didn't hit the pool area, so.
Really?
The pool was painted, the paint was not affected. So, the white of the pool has been painted, now the stencils around the 3 feet deep, 10 feet deep, that has to be done. Tomorrow looks like it's going to rain, so the next opportunity we get to paint, then the pool will be ready.
Great.
So, we're, as I keep, as I keep saying, we're getting there, we're getting there.
Great.
So, it's painted, we're just getting the last touches up soon.
Fantastic, great news, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Fred Rella, Grant writer, here for the Village of Suffolk.
Good evening, board. Also, I see a new face up there, Lisa Ann, so congratulations, and I look forward to working with you on a number of items.
Yes, I'm sorry, so this is the new village clerk, Lisa Ann Marisco Smith. The Marisco Smith, they always get it confused, I'm sorry. So, welcome aboard, and thank you, Fred, for bringing that up to my attention.
I do also want to say, to Steve's question about the pool, about two weeks ago, I took a visit over to the pool with Kathy, and she gave me a little tour for some potential enhancements that we might do via grants. And I had not been there in a couple of years, and I was very impressed with the status of the pool, the amount of work that her team has done in the DPW, and really pulling together to get it done, so it does look like it's going to be in great shape for this upcoming season, so, so kudos on that.
I know the pool bears your last name, I was curious of the connection.
Oh, yeah, well, my father used to be mayor of Suffolk, in the 70s, so that tells you how old I am.
I've noticed that many of the years, and I just never asked you. I've noticed that many of the years, and I just never asked you.
So I have a couple of items I'd like to, uh, just bring up tonight. It shouldn't take very much time. Uh, we have a grant for $125,000 through DASNY for a new backhoe. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, the mayor signed the agreement, uh, with DASNY for that. It's now fully executed, so Charles could now go out and purchase the backhoe. Uh, so that'd be a much-needed addition.
Mm-hmm.
If anyone's driven along Route 202, Wayne Avenue recently, uh, you'll see, you know, we have the Wayne Avenue sidewalk, sidewalk project, which is a CDVG project. And, uh, they put up the retaining wall, and they just started pouring concrete for the sidewalks itself. And it's, once again, that project's going to go from where they're working at, near the bridge, thruway bridge, all the way down to Orange Avenue. So, uh, that's quite an extensive project, and Charles is working on that, I know extensively with Covino Brothers, who are, who is the contractor for that project. We have, uh, also, I just want to mention once again, parking lot B. The agreements are in place. It's fully executed, so we can begin that project. We can begin the bidding process on that, and hopefully we'll see that done in the next several, few months, maybe in the fall. Maybe even in the fall. So that would be great.
We'll be, which, um, I don't know if you'll know, but Charles may know. Charles, will we be incorporating, hopefully we will be incorporating the B-Lot repaving with the roadway improvements? Would that be incorporated or separate?
Uh, I believe it was a grant project.
Possibly around the same time of paving?
Yes.
Okay.
In terms of the actual execution of the order.
Yes. Great.
Yes. Uh, the Community Development Block Grant, the CDVG, the acronym that I've been throwing around, uh, has a Citizen Advisory Committee, and that's made up of individuals throughout the community, and they bubble up ideas, um, for projects to actually apply for, uh, and hopefully they get awarded. Uh, the committee has been made up in the past few years of Ernie Bosco, um, longtime resident, Francis Glick, longtime resident, business owner downtown, um, Charlie Rogers, ex-village employee, retired, um, and Kathy Van Sickle, deputy clerk, retired and still working. Um, we also had one other member, Dina Schmidt. She recently retired and moved out of the Village of Suffering, so we have to replace, um, Dina. And the person who, uh, we're recommending to be on that committee is Teresa Sheddler. And, uh, so she's a resident of the Village of Suffering, a homeowner, uh, and she actually works in the building department here, which would be really advantageous to us. Also, should be mentioning that, uh, Charles and I actively buy into the committee. We're also sort of members, uh, but, uh, we are the advisors and I sort of head the whole thing. So you have before you tonight a resolution that, uh, nominates who the full board or who the full committee members would be for 2021, and hopefully you'll, we'll pass that resolution tonight.
So I have the resolution appointments to the 2021 program year Citizens Advisory Committee. You have the resol, everyone has the reso, right? Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone. Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert. Any, any further on the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, and thank you, Ms. Sheddler, for joining the team. And thank you for the rest of the committee for continuing on the team.
Yes, another volunteer time. It's important for us.
Then, uh, one final resolution, which I think is a very important one, uh, is my contract for consulting to the Village of Suffering is up tonight, and I was hoping that, uh, we might be able to, um, vote on that one while I'm up at the microphone.
Fred, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Resolution, I have the resolution in front of me authorizing Frederick J. Rella to provide grant application services to the Village of Suffering. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan. Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone. Any further on the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Fred. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Keep the money rolling in.
Yes.
Keep the grants rolling in.
Thank you for all your work. I have actually one more question, um, for Kathy Mills. I apologize. I meant to ask before. I know in the past we've had different arrangements in, in regards to the snack bar. I remember like oftentimes we had somebody that was a vendor that would run it, and then one year we ran it ourselves and so forth. What is the current plan for this year?
The plan this year for the concession stand is we're going to run it ourselves. We're going to use the current staff of guards to be moving from, you know, they do.
Rotating.
It'll be a rotation. Okay, perfect.
Rotate, and then they would include the concession stand as part of the rotation.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the clarification.
Okay, at this time I'd like to open up the meeting to public participation. Um, the public is invited to speak. Please come up to the mic, state your name and address, and you have a time limit of four minutes. Here's, uh, former mayor Jim Giannatino.
Oh, I get announced. Look at this. The reason I'm up here is I couldn't let this go by about Ann Corley and Lou Ventorini. The many, many years of being called out in the middle of the night to find a lost child. Ann and I started the bike patrol. I mean, if they lived in the village, they couldn't have more feeling for this village than the two of them had. And of course, the three dogs with the last one patriot. I mean, I think they deserve a round of applause or a standing ovation.
Wow. That was very nice, Mr. Giannatino. They really do deserve. They really do deserve a round of applause and recognition. Great job. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
You set the bar really high. Well, it's nice to see all of you back here at Village Hall. I have just one question, and it's something that I asked at previous meeting, but I think perhaps my question was misunderstood, so I'd like to pose it again to clarify. Mayor, did the labor attorney state that he would not represent the village if his appointment was not unanimous?
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you.
The whole thing?
Just do me one favor. We need your name and your address. Right?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's.
Go ahead.
Gerchett Zephyr Blatt, Parkside Drive.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, I was asking if the labor attorney had stated that he would not represent the village if his appointment was not unanimous.
You're asking me if that's what the, yes?
Yes, correct. That was.
Yes, that's, that is a correct statement. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Hello, Mr. Joseph Hunt.
Welcome aboard, Lisa.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, board and mayor. I'm here, um, for a couple of things, but I'm going to make it short and brief because I only got four minutes, and you know I can talk fast. Excuse me. We have a couple of concerns about our contract. And Article 22 is one of the major ones, contracting workout, union employee work. We want to resolve this as quick and efficiently as we can. I think I sent everybody a copy of our contract, so you can review it, please. Working together as a team, we are one. All roads lead to Suffering. It means we still want. I would like to work this out on an individual basis for employees with each and every one of you, especially you, Mayor. We've done some good stipulations together. I want to continue this, but I want our contract to be honored and respected, because I feel that at times we get pushed aside. Um, again, in the past, from 2016 to date, we've had things that have been shoved away. So I'm here with a positive in thanking you, Mayor, and the board for resolving a 40,000, 47,000 and change response back to my union for double-time Sundays. All right, but it took a long time to get there, and I.
Got to get it right.
I know it wasn't litigation. It was a little bit of change, but that goes back to being able to communicate and sit down and negotiate, whether it's good or bad. Indifferences are made positive. We can work it out. But again, there's no way things should take that long. Um, there was the code ethics. All right, um, again, something put on us that we responded in a negative way because we thought it was bad. Um, after researching it, and we found some negative points in it, and we, I thought we were in the right direction to resolve it, but now we're going backwards because we're going to rescind it and we're going to renegotiate it in 2022, 2023. But we could have still sat down. We were that close, but we didn't get to get together. We let the lawyers, the money that we're paying these lawyers to review and do and review and do, I think we can do a lot on our own. I know there's a law that you can't have more than two board members with you, Mayor, or it's got to be a public notice for a meeting, but if we elaborate to them, uh, we can work things out at a cheaper cost. I can get a raise for my unit. You know what I'm saying?
We're working on that, too.
Well, we are working.
We had a lengthy discussion in the office today, Joe. You know that we are trying to work together as much as possible.
Well, you.
And we will continue on that road.
I just want to be firm to the board, you and the board right now. We do have a contract, and that was signed by you and probably a couple of these individuals. I'm not 100% sure because I don't have it in front of me. But again, um, CSA stands strong. We worked with the village from 2015 when we went in the hole, and we helped you bring it out. We are here volunteering and working, and there's a lot of individuals in the CSA that live here and pay taxes here. So it's not like we're starving my employees because they're giving back more than a lot of people can see. On a day-to-day average, we do a lot, and you change a lot on us, spontaneously, and we resolve all issues.
Please don't try to pass the buck.
I, uh, play not you.
Thank you.
The pyramid.
Thank you.
You're at the top.
You guys do respond. I mean, it is, it is amazing of the response that you get and the changes that are implemented and the way you guys react. It's, and we always do acknowledge it, but we will continue. Thank you, Mr. Hunt, President Hunt.
Scott Brown, former CSA president here in the village, now retired in Florida. And first thing I must say is I'm happy to see you all up here instead of watching you on YouTube, so that's a good thing. Second thing, I would like to thank all the board for finally paying me the money after six years they owed me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Gas money for the Harley.
That's not going to get them very far right now. $3 a gallon.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay. Mr. Charles Swicki, Department of Public Works.
Uh, good evening, board. Uh, the first item, um, actually will have a couple of components. So I just want to mention that, uh, everyone's most likely aware that, uh, last year, as a result of restrictions from COVID-19, uh, no roadwork in, uh, there were no roadwork improvements. So we, uh, we're unable to accomplish anything last year. Um, so that really means that this year we need to do a little bit more than we would normally do. And, um, so I'm looking to, uh, request authorization to solicit bids for roadway improvement Phase 11. Um, in addition to that, I'd like to have a separate, and it's not on the agenda, and uh, something that I, I missed. Um, it would be a separate bid that would be for any related curbs and ADA ramps. So essentially would be for separating out the, any concrete work that would be required as part of the, uh, right-of-way improvements, uh, associated with the, uh, roadwork that we'd be looking to do.
So that's going to be a separate resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
I would assume that would have to be a separate resolution. It could be.
You have to keep that money separate from the CHIPS money and all of that, is that?
Well, uh, that, um, the curb, any curb work or ADA ramps, you could use CHIPS funds.
Okay.
Um, but it would be a separate bid, because we want a, want a contract, uh, concrete contractor to essentially do the concrete work, and we'd be end up, end up getting it done for a more reasonable price than if we subbed it to a, uh, you know, a, a road contractor. So that is something we've done in the past many times.
So now would just, that would just be the solicit bids for the concrete and, okay, so we need a separate reso for that?
Yeah, so what I'm calling that is, uh, right-of-way improvements.
Right-of-way.
And, um, so again, it would be authorizing, uh, solicitation of bids for the roadway improvements Phase 11, and that would be, bids would be due on June 24th at 3:00. And in turn, um, solicitation of bids for right-of-way improvements, um, due on June 24th at 2:30.
All right, so we'll do the first resolution authorizing a solicitation of bids for the roadway improvement Phase 11 project. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert. Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan. Any further discussion? So on the roadway, um, roadway improvement Phase 11, we discussed that it most likely will be portions of Yorkshire Drive, Sagamore, Sunderland, Interstate, portion of Parkside, Ramapo Ave, Dunerie Court, Cypress Road, portion of Bon Air Circle, portion of Jersey Ave, and a portion of West Park Avenue. That's correct?
That's correct. So, um, and that's quite a bit of work.
Yes.
So, um, we do have, and I believe Mike Giannatino, going back a number of months ago, um, presented a, uh, resolution to the board that incorporated, um, our cost-sharing agreement with Orange Rockland. It also, um, uh, incorporated, uh, CHIPS funds from the New York State, and we also included some, um, unused funds from previous projects. So in addition to that, um, we have in the, um, 2022, um, proposed capital projects, we have $400,000 for roadway improvements, and, um, if we are to accomplish all this, um, most likely we'll need to, um, ask for that $400,000.
Okay, um.
So that'd be something, I mean, I'm not sure with the timing on that and when you would need to do that and so on and so forth, but I just.
Well, once we, once we have the bid returned, we'll have a more accurate sense of in which direction we're going and how much paving we're going to accomplish.
Right.
So, okay. Um, does the board have any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the resolution for roadway improvements 11 passes. Now, the next reso that we don't have will be the same, authorizing the solicitation of bids for the right-of-way improvements. Is that also Phase 11?
No, no.
No.
Just, uh, well, I, we're, uh, calling it roadway improvements 2021.
2021. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert. Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, and on the discussion. So be utilizing the same bucket of money or different funds?
It would essentially be the same bucket of money.
Okay.
Yes.
Does anyone have any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No. Motion passes. So that's a new resolution for that project.
I have a question, actually, Mr. Swicki. Um, so I know I've talked to you in the past. I, one of the streets that I've had a few complaints about here in the village is Park Avenue, and. And it seems to be skipped over again, so I was just curious.
Yeah, I'm actually glad you brought that up because there is plans to meet with O&R next week. I believe it's the 17th, you know, about that timeframe. So they, you know, they plan on replacing Gas Main in the Park Avenue area, definitely would include Park Avenue. So once that work is completed, and which it looks like it'll be done this summer, maybe the fall, we certainly would have it on the list for next year. And maybe, again, we'd probably work towards with O&R to gain another cost-sharing agreement with them. Yeah, it's in rough shape, I would say.
Yeah, it's in terrible, I've had a lot of complaints about it, you know, when residents contact me and.
Yeah, obviously we don't want to pave it and they're going to take it.
Yeah, it's been on O&R's list for quite a while.
I actually feel sorry for Trustee Corrigan who lives on this street. But it's in sad shape.
But I do know it's a real plan. So I'm just waiting for O&R.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, next item, approval of 2021 Cornell Cooperative Extension Stormwater II Education Program Agreement. And along with that, I guess, is the, is it two separate resolutions?
Yes. So I have the resolution approving the 2021 Cornell Cooperative Extension Stormwater II Education Program Agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No.
All right, thank you. Along with that is authorize the mayor to sign the 2021 Cornell Cooperative Extension Stormwater II Education Program Agreement.
Have the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the 2021 Cornell Cooperative Extension Stormwater Education Program Agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert, have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the application for payment number three in the amount of $37,263.75 to Covino and Sons for the Wayne Avenue sidewalk project.
Have the resolution authorizing payment number three to Covino and Sons Construction Company for the Wayne Avenue sidewalk projects. Payment number three in amount of $37,263.75 to have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, have a second?
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item would be the Village Hall Building Assessment Presentation. And we have Michael Sorrell, who is the principal of Hedging Design Group. So again, this is kind of the first pass of this report. And we thought maybe the best way, although we sent it electronically to you last week, thought the best way that we could get through it for tonight would be to give everyone a hard copy. Michael's here to go through some of it and answer questions that you might have. Michael, do you want to come up?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So Hedging Design Group, we took a real good look at this building infrastructurally. We looked at the building envelope and the major items that consist with that. That is sort of the exterior masonry, the roofing, the windows, the doors, basically everything that, you know, keeps the separation from the outside element. We also took a look at the interior, major infrastructural elements such as the heating and cooling and some minor electrical stuff.
You can speak into the mic, I can barely hear you back there.
Sorry. What did you miss?
Just keep going.
What's that?
All right, let's, we'll just continue.
Okay.
Speak into the mic, please.
Sure. So we, Hedging Design, we took a great look at this beautiful building and we found a lot wrong with it. Major, major infrastructural elements. Everything, you know, basically on the building envelope and on the interior, you know, there's major issues with the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system and also, you know, the existing radiators. There, I mean, to go into it in detail, you really need to dig into the report. I could probably stand here for a couple of hours going into some of the, you know, the technical issues with the building. I don't think we have time for that.
How about we take a look at, you know, we sort of take a look at the envelope of the building in regards to the roof, the windows, the HVAC, the lentils of the windows, and that type of, the meat and potatoes of it for now because it is very lengthy in detail, the report. But if you give us an overview of that.
Okay. So on the, I'll start with the exterior masonry. The existing masonry, the existing, you know, exterior superstructure is a three-worth masonry wall, uninsulated. It's primarily, you have face brick and then you have an inner width and then you have the interior brick, which is then parged with cement plaster. The major problem you have with that is there's no way to keep any control of outside air and inside air within the building or without, out of the building. So as a function of that, you really struggle heating and cooling the building because it's always leaking air from the inside out and the outside in. So the system's always constantly running. So another function of that, too, is when you have probably a lot of condensation issues. If you see and you look around this building in many of the rooms upstairs, you'll see a lot of efflorescence and you'll see peeling paint, blistering paint. That is a function of water infiltration, which again is a function of the building facade and lentils, but I'll discuss that later. But it's also an issue of condensation because the building is very, very leaky and really because it's old. It's old construction. The windows are old and past their lifetime existence. They're uninsulated. So, you know, all the major ticket items on the exterior envelope, the windows, the face brick, the roofing system, all the flashing, which, you know, is a, which acts as a bridge between one construction element and another, such as the heads of the windows, the window sills, the parapet walls, and the roofing system. So again, that's getting a little bit technical, but all those major exterior envelope items need to be addressed. So starting with the roof, it needs a full removal and replacement. The exterior brick needs, you know, full repointing and some bricks that are cracked would have to be replaced. Some limestone sills need to be, you know, cleaned and/or replaced or repaired. Every lintel that is supporting the brick above a window opening or door opening needs to be removed and replaced. So as a function of that, you have to remove face brick about four courses above each window head to remove the steel lintel, provide proper flashing, and put a new piece of steel in there, and then put the, and put new brick back. So there's over 100 windows and, you know, so you can see that these, these big items have costs associated with it and that's also detailed in our report. What else? So we got windows need to replace, doors need to be replaced, the entire face brick needs to be repointed and/or some of it replaced, all the window lentils need to be replaced. Most of the exterior doors need to be replaced. They're all pretty much uninsulated and all the door frames and stuff are damaged. And so they're not really, you know, again, in terms of the envelope, they're not keeping any of the air out and they're not, you know, keeping any of the air in. So that's, that's really the exterior. And that is all detailed in, in our report and we've proposed solutions for all of these big items, even to the extent of providing some architectural detailing of some of those items. One item that I can talk about, which is the, it's just more of a decorative element, which is the cornice. We have created a 3D model via a drone scan and so we were able to actually recreate the geometry of that existing cornice. And we propose to put back more of a fiber-reinforced concrete or a fiber-reinforced plastic element to keep the cost down and basically zero maintenance. It'll last for over 100 years, much more cost-effective than doing a real stone or precast. And as another function of that, the building could never support a, you know, full concrete cornice. It has to be a decorative element that is hung from the existing brick that's there. If you guys walk around the building, you'll see that there, it was a, it was previously a wood cornice and it was supported via these slots that are cut into the brick and they had some, you know, internal supports and things of this nature. So again, it's all detailed in the report, you know, you can look at that. And moving on to the interior, Mr. Mayor and members of the board, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Unless there's any questions, does the board have any questions in regards to the exterior? Before we move forward into the interior? All right.
So we'll move to the interior then?
Yes, please.
So on the interior, our main focus thus far was the heating and cooling system. And through visual inspection, we noticed some major issues, again, just by visual inspection, of how the ducts are run. And sort of my discussions with Charles, that some of the rooms get heat, some of them don't, some of the rooms get cold, some of them don't. So there's window air conditioning. So basically, there's issues with the ducts, there's issues with the equipment. And we have, you know, definitely dug into that in the report and made some recommendations on that as well. I think that needs further discussion. But long story short is that the heating and cooling system needs, needs to be replaced. We don't feel that repairs would, would be adequate, in particular with the auditorium space. The way that the ducts are set up right now, it's, it's not functioning properly. So on the interior, major infrastructure of the heating and cooling needs, needs a complete overhaul. We've also detailed this in our cost estimate and, you know, have some of our recommendations in the report as well. We are looking at sort of a hybrid approach with some mini splits, which, you know, could, could work. Well, we, there is a lot of duct work in the building, so we would like to recycle that and potentially reuse a lot of that. It's just the problem of the location of the equipment versus the duct work. So that there, you know, that side of building facing the street doesn't really get that much air conditioning because by the time the air is circulated over there, you know, it's such a long run, it's not, it's, you know, losing the, you know, the heat or coolness. The other issue is the steam radiators. We are proposing to remove and replace them with hydraulic radiators. A typical steam radiator gets about 15% efficiency. If they are replaced with hydraulic, you can get at least an 85% to 90% efficiency on a hydraulic radiator. So right off the bat, you're going to be saving money on your heating bills right away.
So it seems like, this seems like this, this building or the equipment or the HVAC, is it at its end-of-life stage?
Yes. Yes.
Let's just cut to the chase here.
Yeah.
It seems like, and we all know, you know.
One good thing, give us one good point.
We have a good, good structure, a masonry structure is a sound building. That's the, that's the best option we have going for us here.
Yes, as long as you're not in an earthquake zone, this building is perfect for hurricanes and things of this nature.
It actually feels like the heat is on now.
Right.
It's so hot. I mean, the detail, Board, do you have questions?
The only question I would have would be where, where would you start first? Where do you think the most important?
So, you know, as an architect, you know, I would certainly start with the building envelope because you have to keep water out of the building. And when we were up on the roof, we noticed there's all sorts of issues with the metal coping that, you know, goes on top of the brick wall. There's pieces missing, there's seams that are popped and not soldered, there's regular, everything is just, you know, if you look at some of these pictures in here, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. So I would probably start with the roof. The issue up on the roof is that there are these massive existing passive ventilators. This building, in terms of natural ventilation, it has a passive system. And it, you know, basically hot air is designed to rise through these passive ventilators that you see on the roof. We are proposing to remove those if, you know, there are solutions and money in place to do the heating and cooling as well. Because we feel that that is causing, you know, more problems. And if you just go ahead and do the roof, you'll keep the water out, but it's also, you're going to be stuck with these ventilators that will compromise a new heating and air conditioning system. So as, as a function of the roof, I would say demo those, fill in the voids with new framing and, you know, at least that you'll be done with that part of it if this project is phased in that way. If we started with the roof, I would demo the ventilators, fill in those voids, and, you know, then you could be ready for some interior work, the heating and cooling portion of the project. You know, the face brick, it is not, the face brick is in, is in pretty good condition, but the mortar is, is completely deteriorated. So it's not shedding water. So if you get a blowing rain against it, all the rain is just being pulled into the mortar joints and it's either going to dry to the inside or it's going to dry to the outside depending on, you know, how the building is pressurized and, you know, how it, the temperature outside, the humidity, all those factors. Really nothing that you can do about that other than repointing the whole building, you know, which, which would help. But again, it's masonry, it's porous, so it's always going to have this either dry to the inside or dry to the outside science behind it. So long story short, I would start with, I'd start with the roof.
There you go.
Before we start with the roof, in your professional opinion, is it in the best interest of the village to try and rehab this building or to try to move somewhere else?
In my professional opinion, it's probably be better, and you might not like the answer, but to me, it's not worth it to, to put that amount of money into this building. Because of the, the building typology, which is a masonry construction, it's very difficult to heat and cool these buildings the way that we heat and cool buildings today. It's not, the building's not insulated. So, but, you know, it's, it's kind of, doesn't work.
So in your professional opinion, the village's money is best spent if we find another location for Village Hall?
Yes. Yes.
Just, just to clarify for the public, because I was going to ask the same question, obviously we're thinking alike, the estimate in this, in this booklet that we've received is approximately $8.5 million for the repairs that are being recommended for this building. So I, myself as a trustee, I would have to think long and hard before I would be willing to spend $8.5 million on a building that's over 100 years old. It just seems, excuse me?
So just to throw out a few numbers, you know, if you did a new building, I think there'd be definitely a, you know, take a hard look at how much space is needed. there'd be definitely a, you know, take a hard look at how much space is needed. A new building is, you know, for instance, I did do a 30,000 square foot new headquarters for the DEC Marine Facilities out on Long Island. Although that had an elaborate lab, it was $1,200 a square foot. So I'm thinking for your needs, you're probably looking in the realm of $600 to $700 a square foot. And that's why I'm saying, and this building is, it's a big building. But all said and done, a new building, you know, everything from excavation costs to the finishes, it really does add up. And in my experience, I've seen it, you know, again, with the DEC Marine Building, we started out at $900 a square foot, and went to 1,200 really quick. So, you know, wound up being $30 million building. Yeah.
You guys are proud of me?
Yes, they were gifted the land from New York State Parks, so, you know, they had that going for them. Yeah. So, you know, you need a 10,000 square foot building, and, you know, you're looking at, you know, $700 a square foot, but that's, that would be probably half the size of this building. Right. So, and spatially, you know, we, things are laid out much different these days. Everything's open floor plan, there's ways to save money in that respect, but it is costly.
All right, so, that's very interesting. Good points that you guys brought out. Does the board have any further questions?
No.
Well, thank you. We're going to have to really dig into this report and take a look at and be challenged. Thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you, members of the board. Any questions, forward them to Charles, and I'd be happy to talk to any of you about any of the technical ideas we have in here.
I actually do, I'm sorry, I do have one quick question.
Sure.
Obviously, you know, again, this whole report is digesting about $8.5 million to go soup to nuts and make this like, perfect or whatever.
Well, that's not, that's not soup to nuts, that's infrastructure. So that's not really doing any, you know, new lighting or cosmetics, good word, yeah. Cosmetically, there's no money for that. To do a whole new building here, you'd look at $25 million.
So, let me cut to the chase here. So, is there a number, or can you estimate a rough number, to do certain critical repairs?
It's all detailed, sure. If you look at the estimate on page...
In other words, hypothetically, let's say the plan was to move the board, you know, move the Village Hall, rather, to a different building at some point.
Sure.
Five years, 10 years down the road, whatever the case may be. So rather than do repairs that would take into account all sorts of savings for air conditioning, heating, and all that sort of stuff, there's obviously physical deficiencies. I mean, you look at the corner here, there's clearly water leak there, because the walls are peeling. So, there's obviously critical issues.
Sure.
That are, you know, in other words, my point is, if you repair the critical issues, you could probably get another five, 10 years out of this building.
Absolutely.
In its current state.
You can, yes. That's exactly right. This is, I do this, you know, on a daily basis in New York City for the New York City School Construction Authority, and I've done a lot of, you know, buildings of this typology, solid masonry. And you get 10 years, you know, with a full, with a full repointing.
I didn't locate that page, but can you give me a ballpark of what we're talking for just critical maintenance? That would, that would be the 10 years.
So, the roof, I think, I can't, I'd have to look at the estimate, but I think the roof would probably cost about, you know, $500,000. The exterior masonry, maybe 1.5. You know, we did have a good number in there for the cornice, I think it's about $250,000.
So we're still talking about $2 million?
Yeah. We're looking at like, yeah, $3 million, $4 million for the exterior. Yeah. Which is a lot of money, you know. You know, budgeting and things like this, it's a lot of money for this. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
At least Mike's still standing after those numbers.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Good evening. First of all, all those problems are solved with the bucket of money that the mayor had mentioned earlier. What we are working on, just as a quick update, as you know, we had the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, and they have within there what's known as the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. The Village of Suffolk is aware that they are going to receive approximately $1.2 million over a two-year period. The first $600,000 of it, still in question as to actually when it will arrive, but we've been told that it should be arriving very soon, in the month of June. Now, one of the things that we are going to do, as we read through the requirements, is to set a commitment of how we will spend that money, and we only have certain things that we can spend the money on. As well, there will be a commitment to a period of time when you actually will spend the money, and if you don't spend the money by that period of time, it gets reverted back to the federal government, whatever you did not spend. So there's various things, and I can think of a few things off the top of my head right now. One of the things they have us doing is calculating what we lost due to coronavirus. I can tell you that that amount is over $600,000 by the calculations that they allow us to use. And I can say that among the things that we could spend money on with a proper plan would be replacement of police vehicles, and getting onto a replacement program with our regular budget going forward in the years. We have two fire chiefs cars that we're looking to purchase this year. I know that our DPW sorely needs garbage trucks, at least one new one, perhaps two. But those are just some of the things that you can spend that money on. Likewise, we can spend it on water and wastewater treatment plants and improvements. The issue there, of course, is that we are already getting some great benefits from other grants and programs that are out there specifically, and financing for water and wastewater. And last, but certainly not least, the network structures within the Village Hall, community center, firehouses, they were put in several decades ago. The wiring is outdated. In fact, I found a report from 2010 that talked about how bad the network system was that we have here. And that certainly could have an upgrade done with the money that we could get from these funds. And part of that could also be used for our program, marrying that money with money that we got from Altice for the, what's known as the PIG grant, for videotaping and video televising our village board meetings, meetings in the community center, meetings in the community room upstairs, et cetera. So those are just some ideas, and as, again, it's still unfolding, we'll keep you advised that how it comes about. So we have before you a couple of resolutions. One is to amend a capital project, and these are pretty much ministerial. We have a capital project 2019-001 and 2017-001. Both of these are sewer projects that were done, financed by the EFC predominantly. But because of the financing and some of the minor amounts that were left at the end of the project, we needed $4,242.25 to be moved from one project to the other. It is really just transferring money from one to the other. It's not going to cost the village anything extra, it's just reallocating the funds between the two projects. So I'm asking the board to adopt that resolution.
So I have the resolution amending capital projects 2017-001 and 2019-001. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next resolution is that we had two projects under the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery. One was the hardening of our water wells, and the other one is the backup power generating systems for Village Hall, and I believe it's the Public Works Garage. In any event, the actual projects, as they were first adopted in a resolution, were off by a slight amount of money, $224 in one case. And what we're looking for then is to have these two projects totaling $120,000.020 instead of the original $119,796. And this resolution will then put these into place and allocate the funds correctly.
So I have the resolution amending, amend resolution number 180 of 2020, goes to projects 2021-005 and 2021-006. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I go to the next item D, I'd like to bring about something which I advised the board very late today. No one's fault. We had a meeting today between myself, Charles Sawicki, Mr. Magrino was on the call, as well as the mayor, and engineers from Delaware Engineering, and our bond counsel. And they were talking about the project that we have to complete the sewer project that's known as project number, excuse me, one moment. Yes, that's project 2019-007, that's the water waste, wastewater treatment plant capital improvements modifications program. As you probably may recall, that project originally was estimated to be $9 million, and we authorized bonding for $9 million. Subsequent to the original project resolutions, we found out that we received a grant, thanks to Fred Rella in part, and of course, Charles Sawicki and a lot of the work he did on it, and myself included, we received a grant of $2.25 million, what's known as a WIIA, that's a Water Improvement Grant. So, that grant was $2.25 million, that allowed us then to reduce our actual borrowing, and the EFC would approve the authorized financing for us. Well, the meeting today was about the bids that came in on contract number two for that project, and the bids were much higher than they anticipated. I can let Charles fill you in on the reasons therefore, but in essence, the project, instead of being $9 million, is now going to be $12 million. Our financing, we had adopted a bond resolution for $9 million, and we have the grant for $2.25 million. So what we need is an additional $750,000 in bonding authority. And the bond council forwarded to us a bond resolution to be adopted to increase the bonding authority by 750,000. Now, that, the reason why we're bringing that up tonight is because it requires what's known as a 30-day permissive referendum period. Within the 30 days, any member of the public can go out and get a petition, the necessary petitions, in accordance with the law, that can challenge the ability of the village to issue that debt. And then it would be set up as a referendum to the public to vote on. So that 30-day period has to pass before anybody can even make a decision to go ahead with the project. Following that 30-day period, there's known a 20-day estoppel period. Generally, the estoppel period never comes into play, because that is really something where someone finds a constitutional defect in the actual bonding process. And we fully anticipate that that wouldn't happen, because we do so many of these, and our bond council is very careful about making sure we do the right, take the right actions. So, the first resolution in this regard is to increase the authorized funding for financing, bond resolution, by $750,000, going from $9 million to $9,750. For that resolution to pass, we need four affirmative votes from the village board, and it has to be roll call vote. So with that, I'll leave it to any questions you may have, or any further information you may need on the project itself from Charles.
To go to 12 million from 9 million seems like a rather large change. Can that be spoken for? Can someone speak to that?
Yeah, I think Charles, if he doesn't mind, but I know in discussions, not only this project, but in others that we have, a lot of it has to do with the extra costs that have been incurred due to the COVID pandemic. And we're talking about the cost of products, the cost of labor, the cost of the supply chain, et cetera.
Do you think, do you think that perhaps some of those costs will mitigate as things return to normal? In other words, I would hate to see us essentially purchasing at top dollar when two years down the road, things will be more economical, potentially. I'm not saying they will be, it's just, I'd like to see this looked into. I just feel like this is a lot of money to begin with, and I'm a little nervous about spending an extra 25% on the project.
Well, yeah, Michael really did explain it very well. Prices, as you know, for, if you go out and purchase any lumber, any, any type of building product, even plumbing supplies, whatever you might personally purchase, the price and availability is a problem. The cost of material has gone up, and the availability has gone up. I don't, I don't truly believe that in short order, that, that the pricing would go down. Typically, what I've found through the years is, once a price has increased, it normally stays, stays high, and just continues. One of the, you know, one of the other reasons why the price possibly come up higher, we are now encompassing all the items that we really feel that are needed at the wastewater treatment plant. We're looking at, you know, including a flood wall, we're including roof replacement. Although the roof replacement would be done as a separate contract, but it would still be part of the cost of the overall project. So we're addressing all of the items that we really feel that are necessary, and that would get us to a point where we're whole again at the wastewater treatment plant. And again, the contract one, the engineer's estimate came in higher than the actual bid price that we, that was submitted. And the, but on the other side, contract two, it came in higher. So, it happens that way. I mean, you know, the engineers sit down, and they estimate these projects. They do their best to actually come up with a cost. Sometimes they're right on, sometimes they're a little high, sometimes they're a little low. So that's another factor that we're dealing with. I think the positive note here is that we do have the $2.25 million grant that we're able to acquire, and so it brings the actual cost to the village lower. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of a summary of where we stand with the cost. It was something that we discussed today, as Michael had mentioned. And, you know, that's, you know, again, once this, all these projects collectively are completed, we should be in very, very good shape. And it's, you know, again, you've got low-cost financing, the grant, it's a good opportunity to get it done.
Yeah, and it's desperately needed down at the wastewater treatment plant. This has been going on for quite a while now, and it's in desperate need of upgrades and modifications. It's a benefit to the entire village, the staff that works there will be able to manage the plant better, understanding that the cost is high, but these are much-needed repairs.
How many bids have, were received?
I believe there were four.
And they were all?
Yeah, there's four, I believe it's four.
Four.
And they were all in this range?
Right.
Some were higher.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, some were higher.
Yeah, well, they all, the rest of them were all higher.
All of them were higher. The way, yeah, the way you looked at it, into contract one and contract two, but overall, the bid that we're looking at now was the lower of the three, of the four.
And the contract two is, it's a much more complex project, more comprehensive, and as a result, it gets to be more costly.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions before I read the resolution? So I have the resolution of the Village of Suffolk, adopted June 7, 2021, amending the bond resolution adopted on March 5, 2018, and heretofore amending... and heretofore amend the June 12, 2018 relating to the construction of improvements to the sanitary sewer system. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second trustee Corrigan.
Second trustee Corrigan, is there any further discussion? And this is, hold on, bear with me, need a roll call vote. Trustee Corrigan?
Yes.
Trustee Barone?
Yes.
Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Solomon?
Yes.
I vote yes, and the resolution passes.
Just one note on the, for the village clerk on the notice, it said Village of Garden City. It should be obviously Village of Suffering and County of Rockland instead of Village of Garden City and County of Nassau.
Oh, boy. We'll make that correction.
That's on a notice.
Mr. Janito, can you speak to the period of time that these bonds will be, you know, in effect, like how many years?
So the question is, how many years will the bonds be outstanding?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are financing, as I said, if, if we get especially the increased financing from EFC authorized. In any event, the EFC issues bonds, and when they do, they typically have a life of about 25 years. The maximum life of the bonds legally could be as much as 40 years, because that's what they allow for sewer plants and sewer treatment plant improvements. But in any event, typically, you go with a lower, which, which the EFC does offer. And again, as Mr. Sawicki had mentioned or reminded us about, the short-term financing would have a 0% financing. The long-term financing is 50% the rate of a AAA rating of the EFC itself. So it's going to be an excellent way to borrow money.
And on the initial bond, just to make reference too, that the initial bond was subject to the permissive referendum and the estoppel period, and therefore, the second.
And we are doing that.
The amendment.
Yeah, just a quick mention on that. Technically, we are under a consent order by the DEC, and under a consent order, we would not necessarily have to have a permissive referendum. However, the original bond resolution did go by permissive referendum, and since it really isn't that much of a trouble to make that happen, it's better to keep it consistent.
Great.
Do you have any anticipation of, you know, with 20, let's just say it's 25 years, picking the number you said that would be typical for an EFC bond. What would be the typical annual cost to the village to pay back the whole, you know, the amount that's being slated?
Okay, so, so the annual cost, I really couldn't tell you what that would be because, first of all, I don't know what the rate is that they're going to actually get when we do issue the bonds, and then again, we'd get the 50% subsidy. Interest is obviously a very big piece of what you pay for, when you pay back your borrowing. So unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to give you an estimate at this time. The second resolution before you, it's not really before you, but this bond resolution I actually received about 15 minutes before I came here to village hall for the meeting. So I didn't have time to prepare the other resolution, but it's very basic. It's to increase the project funding for our project number 2019-007. That's our wastewater treatment plant modifications. That's the one that we are just authorized the additional bonding for, and that's to increase the project budget by $3 million, as I mentioned. The project itself is going from 9 million to 3 million, but we only had to authorize an additional 750,000 in debt. So that, I will work with Mr. Magrino and the village clerk in getting that resolution out to you tomorrow, but it's really resolved that project 2019-007 wastewater treatment plant modifications project be increased by $3 million.
Do I have a motion to the effect?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes.
Okay, Mayor, and the last thing is that, as the village treasurer, I happen to be a member of the New York Conference of Mayors Executive Committee. I happen to be president of the New York State Society of Municipal Finance Officers, and that is a de facto position that you hold on the executive committee for one year. They have a meeting coming up Wednesday in Bolton Landing. It's a one-day meeting to go up and back. So the only expense to the village will be the, basically, parking if they charge for parking, and tolls and mileage. I'm asking for authorization to attend that meeting.
I have the resolution authorizing village treasurer to attend NICOM executive committee meeting in Bolton Landing, New York, June 9, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Magrino.
Okay, so I put up a resolution to set a public hearing to consider a proposed local law amendment to the code regarding cannabis. As you may or may not know, as of March 31, 2021, marijuana has become legal in New York under certain circumstances. One of the, or one of the changes you'll see coming forward will be that there will be retail dispensaries that can open, as well as, you know, what I like to compare them to is, is to alcohol. So retail dispenser, think liquor store, so liquor store for marijuana, and places for onsite premises consumption, so think bars, like for liquor. The law does allow local municipalities to opt out of having these two types of businesses in their, in their locales. So counties cannot opt out, but towns and villages and cities may. So the interesting thing about the law is that opt-out is only eligible for this year. So if the village does not decide to opt out this year, it can never opt out. However, if it opts out, it may opt back in. So if you adopt a local law next month, or whenever it gets adopted, the village board could on January 1, 2022, decide to opt out, or June 1, 2022, decide to opt out. The issue is, and the recommendation that many municipal attorneys are making to their clients, is to do the opt-out so that, because it's just too much unknown right now. The law just went into effect March 31. There's a cannabis control board that's being formed, think state liquor authority, so most likely the SLA, there'll be now the CCB, which will, you know, be responsible for enforcing the law and monitoring these places. So again, it's my recommendation, and this is just to set the public hearing, so I won't get into it much more, much further, but it's, again, most municipal attorneys that I've been speaking with are recommending at least adopt a local law, allow some time for, for people to understand a little better what the impact may be. It doesn't mean, you know, that's really the only aspect of the cannabis law that the village would have any control over. Obviously, everything else is in place. So that's the reason why I'm suggesting to do it, and the other reason to do it now is that this is also subject to a permissive referendum, which Mr. Janito just very eloquently explained. Should the board pass such a local law, it would not take effect until 45 days after its passage if nobody files a petition with the village clerk to challenge it. So, and when I say challenge it, it would be to ask for a referendum, basically, on taking such action. So again, it's, it's something that, it's prudent to act sooner than later, and you can always act to undo it if, for whatever reason the board wishes to. The one, just to, reason to not do it is taxes. You do get a tax benefit if you do have a retail dispensary or a onsite premises consumption place in, in the village. I believe it's about 3% of the sales, so that's a consideration.
So I have the resolution to set a public hearing for the proposed local law, set the public hearing July 12, 2021 at 7:05 PM. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Lead agency, yeah, yeah. I have the next resolution to declare the village, village board lead agency under SECR, in connection with the proposed local law, amending the village code to establish a new chapter 102 entitled Cannabis. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, sorry. Okay. Okay, the, um... Okay, under the village clerk and a special permit for the live entertainment for Marcellos and Agave, the recommendation here would be to move a motion to authorize the village clerk to issue a special permit for live entertainment upon
Subject to
Subject to review and approval by the building department and the attorney's office and chief of police. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Trustee Corrigan.
And trustee Corrigan, any further discussion?
What time will the entertainment cease?
We have the permits here. One is one is 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And the second one is from 7:00, 8:00, 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM and 8:00 PM to 1:00 AM. So different dates, different times.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, on Sunday, different dates.
Right. At 1:00 AM, correct.
Yeah.
That's what we've been following.
Yeah.
Okay, so based upon review and approval by the chief of police, attorney, and the building inspector. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Trustees.
I'd like to talk about the sewage plant and the 3A operator. I'd like to talk about the sewage plant and the village's 3A operator. I'm proposing that we discuss, entertain, talk about having the member of the village's workforce be the 3A operator and have the contract with the current operator be looked at to incorporate having the village employee be the 3A operator and not contract it out.
Okay, so I had a lengthy discussion with Charles Sawicki this afternoon, and with the union president, Joe Hunt, and I will be speaking with the employee tomorrow at 10:00, and we can further discuss this in executive session. I think we're on a, a good path.
Okay.
So we can continue this conversation since it involves personnel in executive session.
All right, that's all I have then.
Okay.
Employment contract, just to be clear.
I have one other thing. We had passed the new parking regulations for the village. One of the merchants downtown who had asked for a 15-minute parking spot in front of his store, it was granted, and I'd like to let him know when the sign will be put up.
Okay, so the signs for the 15-minute spot, and I believe that we need to put that as a priority along with the loading zone on chest, not that, we have to remove. We briefly discussed that, but Joe, if you can make mention that to me tomorrow, thank you. Okay.
I would like, are you done, Charles?
Charles, you good? Steve wants to talk. He's asking you.
So I wanted to take this moment to thank the DPW for a fantastic job with removal of some debris at Boxwood Pond, as well as to add a sign. It looks great, and I'm really proud that that work was completed by the DPW. Thank you. I also wanted to add to what Charles was inquiring about regarding the 3A operator. I believe there was a suggestion to, in conjunction with doing that, to solicit bids where we could get some fresh bids for running the sewage plant, rather than be sort of contained by a previous month-to-month contract with the current vendor that we use to run the sewage treatment plant. I think we should get some fresh bids and see where it stands, what it would cost to operate the plant, because I believe we're spending too much money.
That was also discussed in detail today, and I think we have a good plan moving forward. So we'll continue that discussion. Charles and I met. I think we're on a good, a good path. Okay. Sure, go ahead, Joe.
Three years ago, yesterday, we had a little kid walk into where I had the red fence put up and almost drowned in quicksand. I made this clear multiple times to board members, the mayor, and Mrs. Haggerty when we met her out there. That was the reason why I put it up there, for the safety of our community. The harassment, the negativity that that fence did for the DPW, we were covering you guys. Safety of our tax base, walking around that was the whole reason why we put it there. I couldn't over-elaborate that to all of you. And again, safety first is what I
Joe, I'm sorry, does it still pose a danger? So let's, so, you know, you're talking about, yeah, like, almost put it back. Like, if it poses such a danger, what can we do? Should we post signs and put up some other type of fencing?
Soft ground. We, we, working with Charles Wiki and Kathy Mills, there's really no answer because we're
All right, let's, let's look at the area again, and
If it's a danger, you should
Did you get the picture of my post of the pole that I stuck in the ground?
Yeah.
I pulled it out, and it was up to here on me.
So let's see what we can do. We can't leave it open, then, if you're telling me it's posing
High, so maybe they won't go in there because of ticks. I don't know what to do at this point, but again, signage, nobody's going to listen to signs. Look what they did to my red fence. They kept knocking it down.
I was hearing about this. This, the fence issue came up about a year ago from a resident that brought it up at one of our meetings, and that answer didn't come up before. I was not aware of any safety issue, and I definitely agree that if there's a safety issue, the public should be prevented from accessing that spot.
Joe, let's look into signage, and let's get, let's get a fence back up there and see what, how we can contain that the kids from going in, danger, keep out something.
Danger's soft ground. I don't know what to put up there, but
Joe, if what you're saying, I know that this was emailed the other day. I'm not sure why I didn't bring it up at that time, but if it's a danger, put the fence back up. You can't come up here and say it's a danger and then not do anything. I think you got to put the fence up tomorrow.
I take guidance from the mayor and the board.
Put the fence up tomorrow.
Again.
I, put the fence back.
Can I put a white fence?
Put the fence back, get, get a nice fence, put it back, put a sign. No, thank you. Aye, aye, thank you. Okay. This time, I'd like to make a motion to go into an executive Make a motion to go into an executive session to discuss pending litigation and personnel.
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert.
Second.
Trustee Barone. Trustee Barone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just, when you say personnel, we're discussing employment contracts.
Okay, welcome back. Motion to exit executive session.
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert.
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion to close the meeting.
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert.
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you very much. Everyone, have a good evening.